Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 1272, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173, Section 2 of the City Code, the Mayor to Name the North Side Section of the Three Rivers Heritage Trail after former Mayor Thomas J. Murphy in recognition of the 25th anniversary of his inauguration as the 57th Mayor of Pittsburgh. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 1274, Resolution Directing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Seek City Council Approval for Any and All Transit Options Through Junction Hollow in Shenley Park. Bill 1275, Resolution Granting into Andy Hardy, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 2832 Murray Avenue in the 14th Ward, Council District 5, City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill 1273, Resolution Informing City Council of the Employment of Jody Hirsch as a Member of the URA for a Term to Expire, December 2nd, This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Kraus present, six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Our next order of business is proclamations. Good morning, Councilwoman Strasburger. May I begin with you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good everyone from Big Brothers Big Sisters, please come on up. Good crowd today. So, this is one of our sort of longstanding hallmark organizations in Pittsburgh and so proud to have them here today and as they prepare for their awards, the awards that they're going to be presenting this Wednesday at an event at Huff's. And so we wanted to make sure to recognize everyone that they are going to be recognizing that day. And so I'll start. Whereas, founded in 1965, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Greater Pittsburgh seeks to provide children facing adversity with strong, enduring, and professionally-supported one-to-one relationships that change their lives for the better forever. And, whereas, in 2018, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Greater Pittsburgh served 1,512 children in Allegheny, Green, and Washington Counties. And whereas, each year at the Celebrate Coalition's Award Event, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Greater Pittsburgh honors dedicated volunteers and partners with awards in recognition of the importance of collaboration in achieving success. And whereas, at the 9th Annual Celebrate Coalition's Awards Event being held on January 9th, 2019, Big Brothers Big Sisters will be honoring the following individuals and organizations for their commitment to changing the lives of mentees. Young Professional Outreach Board Members of the Year, India Vereen and Vanessa Swickline; Big Recruitment Board Member of the Year Nancy Griffith; Washington County Advisory Board Member of the Year Marsha Castle; Washington County Big Recruitment Board Member of the Year Carla Dunlap; Youth Outcomes Advisory Board Member of the Year Mark Rogowski of Pittsburgh Mercy; Big Community Partners of the Year, the Pittsburgh Promise, Tickets for Kids Charities, Brashear High School Security Team, and Carrie Schaefer of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate the 2018 Celebrate Coalition's Awardees and commends all Big Brothers Big Sisters of Greater Pittsburgh staff, board, and volunteers for their mentorship and impact on improving academic and social outcomes for children throughout the Pittsburgh region. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, January 9th, to be Big Brothers Big Sisters of Greater Pittsburgh Celebrate Coalition's Awards Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks to Councilwoman Strasburger and all of our council colleagues. Congratulations to our winners. This is the 9th year of this event and I, on a personal level, have never felt such positive momentum, energy, and just passion around the event as we have for this year. This group of individuals here, with any organization, any group, including council, you're only as good as your bigs, your volunteers, and your partners. And this group assembled for 2018, winning these awards in 2019, are top-of-the-notch, absolutely just great human beings that make a difference in all that they do, but especially through Big Brothers Big Sisters. And we're really proud to have them as partners and friends. Councilwoman Strasburger mentioned the 15-12. I can't say the number quite yet, but I can note that 2018 was another record-breaking year. We're going to announce that number real soon for this last year. But it was another record-breaking year, which is a positive thing for our organization. Our team led by CEO Jan Glick, who lives in the Councilwomen's District, that's Jan right there, she's our CEO. And through her leadership over these last 11 years, we've been the National Agency of the Year two out of the last six years, which is definitely a positive thing. I don't know if this is as cool as not, but this is the City of Pittsburgh, so I'll say it. We were also the best nonprofit rated by the city paper this last year. So that's a pretty fun thing as well, yeah. A lot of good things going on in the Glick era. I want to note my other colleagues that are here. Maggie Gill runs our Mentor 2.0 program and our Bigs in Blue effort. You have a commander here in the city, Jason Lando, who's been a great advocate for Bigs in Blue as well. Pam Sloimianni's here as well. She helps coordinate Washington County. We do have two honorees here from Washington County today as well. So we want to make sure to get the proclamations out to all of our honorees. And if they just want to say a quick word, is that okay, Mr. President?
Of course, absolutely.
If they want to come up, we can actually...
Pass the mic.
Okay. First, Marsha.
Good morning, everyone. I had the privilege of working a very brief time in college for Big Brothers and Big Sisters and I really think it's a great organization. I'm thrilled to be part of it and I hope to be part of it for many, many years to come. This is just the beginning.
Up next, we have Vanessa Swickline, who is celebrating her birthday today with City Council. So, we won't sing, but can everyone in the crowd in City Council at least say happy birthday, Vanessa?
Happy birthday, Vanessa!
Good morning and thank you, everybody. I'm so honored to be here and I'm honored to be part of such a wonderful organization as a youth in the City of Pittsburgh. I have seen a lot of my friends struggle and be not necessarily always out on the top of things. So I am proud to give back to my city and be a part of the young professional organization here in Pittsburgh. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Vanessa. We'll go next to Ms. Nancy Griffith. Nancy is the Big Recruitment Board Member of the Year and until nine days ago was the reigning Big Sister of the Year in Pennsylvania. And I will say, we have the mom of the former Little Brother of the Year, Samir from last year, which is very cool. Kim is Samir's mom. So, we had a fun time touring the state with Samir and Ms. Nancy did a great job as well this year as the Big of the Year in PA.
Yeah, I just want to say, I've been with my little sister for seven years. I got her when she was seven, she's now 14-years-old. And it's been a great experience for both of us, but mainly because we've done a lot of things in the city that otherwise I don't think she probably would have had the opportunity to do. And it's opened her eyes to a lot. In fact, we recently also just got her mom a nice award through the city. And this is a lady who's had a lot of adversity and just keeps on truckin'. She's an amazing person. Thanks.
That's the Mayor O'Connor Award, right? We met through your sister and got it going, so that was really good. So, up next is Jason. Oh, we'll go Jason next. Jason is from Tickets for Kids Charities, which is a fantastic partner. And those kind of good opportunities that Ms. Nancy was talking about, a lot of those come through Tickets for Kids Charities.
Thank you and good morning. And we are just so grateful, Tickets for Kids, for the opportunity to collaborate with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, because it's only through partnerships like these that we are able to accomplish our mission of providing 70,000 opportunities each year to make sure that kids in the City of Pittsburgh, all kids in the City of Pittsburgh, have access to the cultural resources. So we thank you and thank you to the council as well.
Up next is Carla Dunlap, the Washington County Recruitment Member of the Year.
Good morning. I really do feel blessed to receive this honor and I'm still just blown away by this. I got involved with this because my brother actually was a little and his big was amazing. We couldn't have asked for a greater big. And I wasn't ready to be a big and I wanted to do something. And Big Brothers Big Sisters is a phenomenal agency and I work with a great group of people and I feel like I share this award with them. And I'm looking forward to continuing to be a part of this just phenomenal agency. So, thank you for this award.
Thanks, Carla. And up next is Mark Rogowski, who a few of you probably know, either from his JCC days or his current days with Pittsburgh Mercy.
And that's why I didn't want to get this.
And he's the Youth Outcomes Advisory Board Member of the Year.
Thank you for this honor. It's not about me, it's more about the collaboration and the kids that we all work with. And I'm fortunate that I knew Tom from a long time ago when I spent a lot of time with him and Lynette Letterman's daughter. In fact, Lynette, you can all thank for bringing me back to Pittsburgh from Texas. You probably forget that. So, but thank you. We appreciate the collaboration, enjoy working together.
Thanks, Mark. And up next, before we get to Brashear, we're going to go with Brashear last. We got Lauren from the Pittsburgh Promise. Pittsburgh Promise is a great partner with us as well and with many of you, I'm sure, through your districts.
Thanks so much. So, the Pittsburgh Promise is focused on getting kids to and through post-secondary education. And we know that students can't be successful unless the ecosystem surrounding them is strong and supportive. And Big Brothers Big Sisters is a big part of that. So whether we collaborate directly or indirectly, it's always a pleasure. So thanks so much.
Thanks, Lauren. And I will tell you, our staff loves this next group. Sometimes we're, you know, we're not always sure what we think about security. Our staff, our kids at Brashear, love, love, love this team. This team is amazing. I know they've got their leadership here as well, but Officer Wade and everyone involved with the Brashear Security Team, when we talked to Mentor 2.0, the team that Maggie leads about the Partner of the Year, they love these guys. So thank you so much to the Brashear Security Team for all you do to keep kids safe and to work with us as Big Brothers Big Sisters.
I just want to say thank you. And we as a team are proud to be partners with you guys. And I've been with them since they won, since Big Brothers came to Brashear, and that was five years ago. And I remember the speech that I had to do when the first class graduated last year. But I wouldn't be as good as it was for my team here and I couldn't ask for a better team. It's just any team, it's his family. And thank you Chief Brown for putting me with great people.
One more big round of applause, if you don't mind, for all of our winners.
And I'll just add that if you know of anyone who wants to volunteer in the community and wants to make a difference, Big Brothers Big Sisters, it's not just about being a big, that's one opportunity, but it's also about meeting once a week, being a middle school mentor. They have so many different opportunities to get involved. In fact, the city, the City of Pittsburgh employees have, you know, have the opportunity to take, you know, paid time off to be able to go and be a middle school mentor. So I would hope that city employees would take advantage of that opportunity. But if you know people who are, you know, finding themselves suddenly retired or they're moving into Pittsburgh and they want to get involved, great organization. So I hope you encourage everyone you know to get involved in some way or another with this fantastic organization. Can we get all members up for a photo, please?
Yeah. Councilwoman Harris has called out all other staff of BBBS to come up for the picture too.
I don't think... I think they're all good.
This is Hirsch.
Hi, Tom.
Like that never happened before.
Bye, Tom. Thank you. Thanks, Councilwoman. Maybe we have Councilman O'Connor next. Morning, Councilman.
Good morning. Thank you. Can we have everybody here for Officer Coleman Day? Please come up. Family, they're very shy, but come on up. The whole crew. So this is a proclamation that we had scheduled a couple of times and then there were some issues that we had to reschedule, but we're very proud that we get to do this. Officer Coleman was a very brave individual a couple of months ago and we want to honor him. And also, I coached his brother in baseball, so it's good to catch up with the old baseball crew. Yeah, come on in, come on in. Don't be shy, don't be shy. You're all speaking, just so you know. Whereas, in our turbulent world, sometimes ordinary people do extraordinary things. Born and raised in Hazelwood, Toby Coleman is a graduate of Central Catholic, which, I mean, that's pretty good right there. Yeah. C.C. rah rah, yeah. And Point Park University and has been a corrections officer at Allegheny County Jail for four years. Whereas, Officer Coleman's daily routine before work includes a stop at the Kogo's on Beechwood Boulevard and Greenfield Avenue to buy an iced tea. We're just going to assume it's Turner's. Probably, all right, yeah. On July 24th, 2018, upon entering the establishment, Officer Coleman encountered an assault on the Kogo's store clerk taking place, and he sprang into action. And whereas, without concern for his own personal safety, Officer Coleman and another customer moved to assist the 27-year-old store clerk from a knife attack by an older man welding two machetes. Officer Coleman restrained the suspect and in spite of the machete and a large loss of blood from the victim, was able to extract the suspect from the victim with proper restrained technique and hold him until the City of Pittsburgh Police arrived. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Officer Toby Coleman for his quick thinking, his sound judgment, his instinct to do always, to always do the right thing and to use his proper technique that he learned during his training and exemplary career as an Allegheny County Corrections Officer to save the life of another human being. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 8th, 2019 to be Officer Toby Coleman Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, officer.
All right. So the officer's a little shy, he's going to do a couple of thank yous. We do want to know though, now that you've been back to the Kogo's, do they give you free iced tea every once in a while? We'll have to talk to the manager about that. But anybody else here who wants to say a couple of words, you're more than welcome, but thank you.
Short and sweet, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman O'Connor and to the entire council here. I appreciate it very much for the honor. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Shelley Treleki. I'm the aquatics supervisor for City Parks. And Toby has worked as a lifeguard and a manager for us part-time over 10-plus years. I'm not even sure exactly. 10-plus? 10-plus years. And we have some of our aquatics team here that just want to thank him for all of his years of service and we really appreciate, you know, everything that he's done. It's been a pleasure working with him and we hope that he continues to work for us and that we are just extremely proud of all of his efforts, what he has just done in this proclamation, and all of the support and everything he does every day in helping our youth and patrons at the pool every summer. He comes back and works for us part-time around his full-time schedule and we really appreciate everything that he has to offer. And like I said, I hope he continues to work for us in the many more years to come. So thank you and we are extremely proud of you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill.
President.
Sir.
Okay. Can I have my Eagle Scout, Brandon, and his father David, and Andy up here? Fourth City Council District, I'm proud to say, has been turning Eagle Scouts out like nobody's business lately. So if ever Armageddon occurs, the other council members, I'm sure, will have to come to us for our safety tips and things to do, like what water can we drink and how to build a fire and these types of things, Brandon. But I say that jokingly, but part serious too. But I will say this, it's much more, it's much more than that. It's about how to teach these young men how to grow up and treat people right and do the right thing. And we're very proud of you, Brandon, and, you know, keep doing good work. And by the way, Brandon's the youngest of your troupe or...
Yes.
Okay.
Nico last month.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Nico's older now, so he doesn't count anymore. Okay, so whereas Brandon Skolniak is a resident of Carrick, a sophomore at Seton La Salle High School and a member of Boy Scout Troop 296. And whereas Brandon has completed all the required merit badges and community service projects, reaching the rank of Eagle Scout. And Brandon's efforts resulted in the removal of dilapidated statues, replacement of stone trim, placement of two new benches, the laying of a new mulch, and planting of new shrubs. And whereas Brandon's efforts also included fundraising, administration of funds, and identifying, organizing, and supervising volunteers. And whereas Brandon completed all of these requirements at the age of 15, becoming one of the youngest scouts in Troop 296 to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, while also maintaining membership in the order of the era. And Brandon is an active scholar participating in the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science and qualifying for the state finals in 2018. He is also two-time Carson Scholar, Member of Junior Achievement, Campus Ministry, and the Seton La Salle Marching Band. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Brandon Skolniak and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 8th, sorry, Brandon, to be Brandon Skolniak Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Brandon.
Brandon wants to say a few words.
Hey, I'd just like to first thank Councilman Coghill for helping me receive this honor. I'd also like to thank Mr. Andy Schistler, my scout master, for mentoring me and helping me along the way to get this achievement, which I had so desired for such a long time. And also my father, David Skolniak, for pushing me further and further and helping me along the way so that I could eventually receive this award. And also my mother, Denise Skolniak, for just same kind of mentoring, just pushing me to get this goal, which I'd set myself to achieve so long ago and which I now have.
I'm going to give him a badge for remembering his mother.
Thanks, Brandon.
I just have to say, I know Brandon since he's an infant. I was holding him as an infant. I can't believe how big he's got.
Tell him what Dave does, darling. Councilwoman.
Go ahead, Dave. Tell him what you do.
I'm the media services manager for the Pittsburgh Public Schools, so Darlene was school board president when he was born. So, and I worked with Teresa also when she was in Communications and Marketing, I guess, at some point many years ago. And Maura Anthony's Chief of Staff is one of our school board members now, so it's kind of a get-around-the-way. But, so yeah, that's how I know these people.
You're fantastic at the job, I should say that.
Sure. Have all members, please?
You held him as a baby?
Yes.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Okay, Councilman, thank you. We have, Madam Clerk, two, no, we have three proclamations to be read into the record, please. We have two from Councilman Lavelle, we have an additional proclamation from Councilman O'Connor. May I thank you, Councilman?
Councilman Lavelle presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 8th, 2019 to be Harvey Adams Junior Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Lavelle also presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 8th, 2019 to be Judge Walter R. Little Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Corey O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 8th, 2019 to be Mascot Skate Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and it takes us into public comment. I would like to remind anyone that wishes to speak before City Council that you'll have three minutes in which to do so. I would also like to remind everyone that our rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We do not permit profanity. We will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. When the green light comes on, it will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have a minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time has expired. So may we have our first speaker, please? Okay, Rafiq, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Rafiq Brookins. Petition to abolish city, state, and federal governments pursuant to Pennsylvania State Constitution and the Federal Declaration of Independence. This is a petition to abolish city, state, and federal governments pursuant to the Pennsylvania State Constitution, Section 2, which states that all power is inherent in the people and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have... Councilman Lavelle presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 8th, 2019 to be Harvey Adams Junior Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Lavelle also presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 8th, 2019 to be Judge Walter R. Little Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Corey O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 8th, 2019 to be Mascot Skate Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and it takes us into public comment. I would like to remind anyone that wishes to speak before City Council that you'll have three minutes in which to do so. I would also like to remind everyone that our rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We do not permit profanity. We will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. When the green light comes on, it will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have a minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time has expired. So may we have our first speaker, please? Okay, Rafiq, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Rafiq Brookins. Petition to abolish city, state, and federal governments pursuant to Pennsylvania State Constitution and the Federal Declaration of Independence. This is a petition to abolish city, state, and federal governments pursuant to the Pennsylvania State Constitution, Section 2, which states that all power is inherent in the people and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in any manner, in any manner that they may think is proper. This is also pursuant to the Declaration of Independence, 1776, which states that, when in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with one another, with one another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that through secure these rights, governments are instituted among men and women, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these rights, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundations or such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Puritism indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to write themselves by abolishing the, by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of obuses and usurpings pursuing invariably the same object evinces a desire to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. This is our intention with this petition, to abolish the entire city, state, and federal governments, reform them to where the people's rights, liberty, and property are protected unequivocally, and then reinstate them as direct democracies where all of the power for all decision-making will lay in the direct hands and power of the people. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Rafiq. Okay, may we have our next speaker then, please?
That's a party ad, though. Hitler used that same eagle looking to the right.
Okay, thank you. We're fake.
Every single quarter. This is the demonic.
We're fake, thank you.
And I'm gonna prove it, and I'm gonna expose it all. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, or no, may we have our next speaker, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Bill 229, Oakland, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States, 2020. I'm a member of the American Chemical Society, American Mathematical Society. Dr. Marjul Barghava, you should know about him. 117, Tennessee. Mr. Kraus, have you ever thought about stepping aside as President of Council? Think about it. Do an alphabet Google search on local government impeachment. A concern of City Council from a proclamation through January 2019 is plastic bags and therefore garbage. In the proclamation and in comments on it, District Representatives Gross and Strasburger used the word "plastic" but didn't define it. What is it? A plastic is a polymer, a substance in which molecules are closely lined up in a row, making its structure tight. Ms. Gross, District 7, Chair of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development, $60,000 a year, voluble anti-polymerist, while rambling on in an anti-plastic bag rant through January 19, lacking logical coherence in my view and evidentiary comprehensibility, but remembering the good old days before plastic bag ubiquity, quaint, and recounting landfill horror stories, quamish. Ms. Gross omitted scientifically significant pro-plastic information, facts, intelligence, reasoning. So contrasted with paper bags which are biodegradable, plastic bags which can be biodegradable are, one, water-resistant, two, insect-resistant, three, supply greater break resistance, four, require less purchase expense, and five, provide more employment opportunities. Sophisticated information, savvy intelligence on this, Ms. Gross, plastic bags, no. GIGO. Ms. Strasburger, District 8, Chair of the Committee on Innovation, a vigorous anti-plasticist while taking time to trample plastic bags and taking no time to respond to requests for information about the Association for Nonviolence and Spiritual Advancement, belated the position, the pro-plasticist position of the Pittsburgh City Department of Public Works, which requires plastic bag enclosures. No plastic bag enclosure, no pickup. I view the lack of rationality here to be astonishing.
Okay, Dr. Miller, thank you. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Rosenwald and I live in Mount Lebanon, Pennsylvania. I'm here today about the Art Institute of Pittsburgh. This is really hard for me to talk about. I'm just wondering why it's still standing when it used predatory lending tactics to bring students into the school. And most of us are, many, very, like, I'm $80,000 in debt and there's so many more of us. They lied to us about job placement. They lied to us. Excuse me. They lied to us about everything and now we're stuck with this debt, living in poverty and cannot get jobs and can't go, I can't go back to school because of all the student loans that I already have. So I'm just wondering why they're still allowed to use these tactics and still standing and why our grandparents didn't even know what student debt was and now we're here and we're dead. And I'm not alone in this, there's several other people, but they have jobs to go to today. Yeah, there's several in Pittsburgh and, you know, we're holding back from getting married, from having children, you know, like, I just don't understand how this is allowed to happen. So I just, I thought this was more interactive and I would be able to act, ask you questions about what I can do and where we can go with this, but it's not fair, it's not right. It's just, it can't go on any longer. I know people on food stamps, several people on food stamps because they are paying their loans, they're paying six to $800, sometimes more, you know, and they have been for years and their debt is not going down at all because of the interest rates and it's just not right. It's not fair. They're taking food stamps, you know, and just to pay loans, like, it's ridiculous. It's not.
These people don't care at all. They kick like $66.
We're fake. You're out of order.
So, I guess that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here. Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to register for public comment today? Are there any further speakers? Okay, then seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to presentation of papers. We begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess. May I have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess?
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
Oh.
Yep. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
It's a double duty.
Councilman Coghill presents, Bill Number 1272, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173 of the City Code, the mayor, to name the North Side section of the Three Rivers Heritage Trail after former Mayor Thomas J. Murphy in recognition of the 25th anniversary of his inauguration as the 57th Mayor of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development, may I have Councilwoman Harris for Councilwoman Gross?
No, no, no.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers? Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents, Bill Number 1274, Resolution Directing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to seek City Council approval for any and all transit options through the Junction Hollow in Shinley Park. Bill Number 1275, Resolution Granting unto Andy Hardy, their successors, and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 2832 Murray Avenue in the 14th Ward, Council District 5.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kelsmith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the chair has one appointment. It is an informing appointment. Is this a reappointment, Madam Clerk? It is a new appointment. Why would we only read, receive, and file a new appointment to the URA? Okay, yeah, yeah, I think there would be, there is not a reappointment. I have, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I just have read, receive, and file on my notes.
Oh, okay, no.
Okay, good. Yeah, I would think members would want to interview. Thank you.
Council President Kraus presents, Bill Number 1273, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Jody Hirsch as a Member of the Urban Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire December 2nd, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This, I will get right to you, Councilwoman, this would, this would require confirmation?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Motion to interview.
Yeah, a motion to interview and a second with discussion. The legislation came over as informing, but this would require council action. Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second to interview, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, we'll schedule that to bring, forgive me, Ms. Hirsch in as quickly as possible. Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, that takes us into unfinished business and without unfinished business before the council, we go to reports of committee for final action. We begin with Councilman Burgess, who is our Chair of our Committee on Finance and Law. May I please have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess? Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents, Bill Number 1267, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 3rd, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1209, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Kramer Mains and Associates in an amount not to exceed $19,000 in full and final settlement of an action filed with the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and cross-filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Bill Number 1210, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety, to accept a donation from the Pirates Charity for $12,500 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1246, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 862 of 2018 by deleting the position of administrative aide in the Department of Public Safety Administration and adding position titled Stop the Violence Coordinator on pages 238 and 239 of the 2019 operating budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. We have further discussion starting with Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you, there is just a technical amendment to Bill 1246. Rev's not here to make the technical amendment, but the amendment's right in front of everybody.
Okay, do we have discussion on the amendment to Bill 1246?
I think so.
Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, or motion to approve, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bill's amended. Any further discussion on 1246 as amended? Okay, the bills now are ready for final action. I ask that all in favor of the passage of our bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, nyes, ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents, Bill Number 1269, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 3rd, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1217, Resolution Providing for a Contract and/or Agreements Providing for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof not to exceed $965,794.03. Bill Number 1238, Resolution Accepting Dedication of a Portion of Street A and Street B North and Street B South, Street C North and Street C South, which are part of the Lower Hill Redevelopment District Roadway Plan as laid out in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Project Number 14103 Plans in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District of the City. Bill Number 1245, Resolution Amending Resolution 755 of 2018 so as to increase the contract amount not to exceed $88,981 and extend the agreement to April 30th, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received, then, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents, Bill Number 1269, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 3rd, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1232, Resolution Amending Resolution 712 of 2016, which authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., to provide body-worn cameras for the Bureau of Police as well as additional related goods and services by increasing the costs from $1,528,209 to $2,326,509 over the course of the contract.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Public Safety Services. Do we have further discussion on either of the bills? Okay, all right. With that, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received, then, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents, Bill Number 1269, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 3rd, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1217, Resolution Providing for a Contract and/or Agreements Providing for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof not to exceed $965,794.03. Bill Number 1238, Resolution Accepting Dedication of a Portion of Street A and Street B North and Street B South, Street C North and Street C South, which are part of the Lower Hill Redevelopment District Roadway Plan as laid out in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Project Number 14103 Plans in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District of the City. Bill Number 1245, Resolution Amending Resolution 755 of 2018 so as to increase the contract amount not to exceed $88,981 and extend the agreement to April 30th, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called and those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our chairperson is Councilwoman Deborah Gross. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents, Bill Number 1270, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 3rd, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1003, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article One, Planned Development District in Article Four, Alamo No. by replacing the text in kind with a new SP-10 Hazelwood Green Specialty Plan District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do members have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bills- Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called, those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Next, our Committee on Land, or, I'm sorry, in Intergovernmental Affairs, our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number twelve seventy-one, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January third, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve fourteen, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the fifteenth ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Five. Bill number twelve fifteen, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and to the publicly owned property in the nineteenth ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Two. Bill number twelve sixteen, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the eighteenth ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Three. Bill number twelve thirty-three, Resolution adopting plan revision to the cities of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for West Pittsburgh Business Park Building, number one A, one B, number two, at five sixty-three Napier Boulevard. Bill number twelve thirty-four, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to renew the non-exclusive license agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for Veteran Affairs Highland Park Campus for limited use and to conduct the due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes. Bill number twelve thirty-five, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Sa, Public Work to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and AE Seven Pittsburgh LLC for architectural and engineering design services for the multi-story office buildout at four twelve Boulevard of the Allies for the not to exceed amount of five hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cent. Amount broken out below per use area, if during the design process these amounts need to be adjusted, another resolution will be issued to reconcile the changes. Bill number twelve thirty-six, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Nine. Bill number twelve thirty-seven, Resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and to the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Additional comment begins with Councilwoman Gross.
Actually, just for the record, I want to clarify the reading of Bill twelve thirty-four. The clerk read Highland Park Campus, but it doesn't read Highland Park Campus. The campus is, I guess it's in Leamington, is that?
It is in Larmer.
It's in Larmer?
I mean, no, no, it's in Lincoln, Leamington, sorry.
Lincoln, Leamington.
Lincoln, Leamington.
The text reads Highland, the, the street name is Highland Drive, so it's Highland Drive Campus, but the clerk read, it's, so, just for clarification for the listeners at home, it's not Highland Park neighborhood.
Got you.
And again, I'm going to register a no vote on twelve thirty-five, which I discussed last Wednesday, which is the allocation of funds to the Class A office building that was purchased with the administration and the URA and the housing authority.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'll also be voting no on twelve thirty-five. Four million dollars in bonds, plus this is going to increase, and we have a building that has been usable and could still be usable.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. If that concludes discussion, then these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No on Bill twelve thirty-five, aye on all other bills.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye on all bills, except for twelve thirty-five, I'll be voting no.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
No on twelve thirty-five, aye on the rest.
No on Bill twelve thirty-five, aye on the remaining bills in the committee.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
On Bill twelve thirty-five, ayes five, noses four, all other bills, ayes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. The Chair has only one brief meeting announcement, and that is that we are hosting a cable cast public hearing today at one thirty this afternoon on Bill ten eighty-three as it relates to a conditional use application for the Golden Triangle Subdistrict. Further discussion begins with Councilman Burgess.
Madam Clerk, I would, two things. First of all, I want to thank members of council for handling the amendment in my committee. I was detained over at the college. I do also want to register an aye vote on that, on the final vote of the Committee on Finance and Law.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kelsmith?
I just want to thank Councilman O'Connor for going out and talking to the young woman who came in to talk about her problems with the student debt. You know, as we know, this is something that's plaguing our entire country, and it's just, it's so frustrating to sit here and not be able to help people in those situations because this is so much bigger than us and within our power. But, you know, a lot of times we do things that aren't in our power, wish this is one of those things we would take on because, I mean, we think of anything that's really affecting the future of this country, I mean, the student debt is really hitting so hard on so many of our young people, and it's just, it's so frustrating. I mean, I felt my heart broke for her because honestly, I have my own kids that have their own student debt. I mean, they attended Robert Morris and, and Point Park, and my other son joined the military to get the, the GI Bill. I mean, it's, and yet, they struggle every day with, with, with the debt, and what, and I'm glad to see that some people are starting to take some steps, but when we talk about saving industries and saving different, I think this is the one place I wish that our federal government would really look into, seeing what we can do to really help the future of our country and of our young people. I mean, it's really, it's heartbreaking to watch all this.
It was difficult.
Yeah, and it was hard to listen to her story, but you know that there's so many more like her. It was just difficult, but I want to thank Councilman O'Connor for going out.
I would just add that Councilwoman Gross was actually, she happened to be out of her office, so she was out there too. Just wanted, you, nobody, you didn't see her, but she was out there too.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
So thank you, yeah.
Thank you both, because I, I mean, I think when people come here and they are looking for some kind of help, for one of us to at least go out and talk to them is really important, especially people that come that aren't here frequently, and you know that there's a serious problem that they need help with, and I wish that this was something we could really, truly help with.
Councilwoman, thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I'll only add that Councilman O'Connor and I both advised that if there's any body of government with purview, it would be the state of Pennsylvania, so we are going to connect the constituent who's actually resident of Mount Lebanon with her state representative, Representative Dan Miller, so that we can continue the conversation, and thanked her for coming forward. It is an important issue, we hear about it when we're in our neighborhoods and in our community meetings, and again, we don't have purview over the corporate, you know, the corporate status, the business license of the, the
School for profit.
Yeah, the for-profit school, so, but we're happy to continue the conversation.
Thanks, Councilwoman, thank you very much. So then, with nothing further from members, may I have a motion to approve our minutes and adjourn our meeting?
Move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thanks.